No decisions are made at these meetings. Any follow-up items will be placed on a future county commission agenda for actual formal action, if required. So, and with that, I can turn it over to Suzanne. Okay.
Sure.
Great.
Sure. So, I'm Suzanne Valdez, and I think I've met just about everyone here on the screen. I am very honored to serve as the district attorney here in Douglas County, and I've been on the job for two and a half weeks. I don't think I've screwed anything up, at least that's major. So, I'm excited to be a part of the DA team. We've got a great team that's been put together, both by, it includes those lawyers that have, our career prosecutors who have done a great job representing this county in their roles as prosecutors and support staff, but we also have some really good new people who have been onboarded. So, I'm very excited about the future of our office in terms of its growth, in terms of criminal justice reform. And I think with this election cycle, you know, we really pushed the reset button on criminal, the criminal justice system here locally in Douglas County. Since August, when I won the primary election, I've spent a lot of time working with various community stakeholders, talking with those people, working a lot closely and talking with law enforcement to really rebuild those relationships so that we can have collaboration on many efforts that, of course, include reform, but also, very, very importantly, keeping in mind public safety. So, I think those communications and those collaborations have been really, really, have gone well, and I look forward to those relationships, of course, going forward. And I'm very grateful to work with the new Sheriff Armbruster because I know that he shares a lot of the same philosophy that I do. So, in terms of the transition to the DA's office with two weeks, two and a half weeks in, I would say it's fairly flawless as transitions go. I thought I'd just explain a little bit about the organization of the office, which kind of has been a priority, just so that we can really recognize both the, what's necessary in terms of public safety and prosecuting those violent crimes with alternative programs, alternatives to incarceration, which is, of course, a big priority. So, we have two deputies in the office, Dave Mountain, who's been with a career prosecutor, been with the office for 15 years. He is in charge of our trial teams, and that's an area where, of course, you know, if we need to be in court and we need to put folks to the criminal justice system, I believe Dave's the guy to lead it. He's an incredible prosecutor, very ethical, and he's leading that side of our, of our organization or office. Josh Sidon, who's with us today and who's going to be instrumental in informing you about our new diversion program that we're working with, launching with Pam Legion and company, which I'll explain in just a second. Josh comes from the defense bar. He is just an amazing, not only lawyer, but an amazing person, has the heart of gold. And he has been working very, very hard to come up with a format, if you will, if, to our organization where we can house what we call our alternatives to incarceration unit. In that unit, we will have our standard diversion program. We will have our enhanced diversion program, which we want to talk about today, and hopefully get ready to roll out soon. Of course, it will have the specialty courts, which include behavioral court, drug court, and then, of course, exploration of other alternatives. So Josh has really been instrumental in spearheading that piece of what we do, and which is very important to our office. So, a little, what is the enhanced diversion program? This is where I want to give the shout out to Shannon Young and the Pam Legion with the Criminal Justice and Adult Services piece of what we do here. This has been an area of great curiosity to me, and I think a priority, where you take a standard diversion program and you really enhance it. So, the best way to describe it is enhanced. It just provides more structure. It provides more oversight for those people who really need it so that they can complete those conditions that they need so that prosecution doesn't happen. So, I want to give a big shout out to Pam and to Shannon and to Josh. I know that Shannon Young and Josh have done all the heavy lifting and have done, created, really spent a lot of time working out the details. And so, I'm just giving you the 50,000-foot view. I'm very excited about it. I think we're ready to launch it. This is just an example of collaboration that I think was long overdue between what we do in our office and what Pam Legion and her, and her folks do in their, in their space. So, without, I guess, further ado, I just will turn this over to Josh and to Shannon. I know that the two of them, again, have, have worked out how they want to present this, this enhanced diversion program to you all, and again, are the ones that have all the detail that goes into what I think is going to be a wonderful program once we get it launched. So, thank you for your time. I'm always available to you if you ever have any questions, and I appreciate you all being here. So Josh, if you want, or, Pam, did you have anything to add to that?
No. I just want to make sure Robyn puts up the PowerPoint so they can start reviewing the slides with you. Does she have the PowerPoint?
Send her the PowerPoint. Normally, you all.
Yeah. I did it, and I sent it to her, and I also put it in.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared. Give me a moment.
Sorry. I thought you said you were going to roll it. So I just, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, we can do it either way, but just give us a minute.
Okay. It's a little different not doing it in person. Yeah, Suzanne and I started meeting last, well, last fall, talking about what we can do to try and enhance our system, to try and divert people from the criminal justice system. And this is kind of what we, what staff have been working on, putting together to help divert people from criminal justice altogether. Would it be faster for me to do it?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Sorry. I've got a few files up and. Sorry. Sorry. I've read too many of these. There we go. Can you guys see that?
Looks great, Pam.
Okay. Now I gotta figure out how to start it. I'll just do the slide as you guys go along.
Sound good. Well, thank you, everybody, for having us today. We appreciate the opportunity to talk about this program. We're very excited about this program. And so, I'll give you kind of a brief overview of what we've got going on here. The purpose behind this program, while we acknowledge that, that we acknowledge that public safety and victims' rights are a paramount concern, we're observing that there are other societal interests at play. We've got to be concerned with providing equal access to justice and also promoting offender reformation through these alternative programs. The old fire and brimstone ways of just, you know, lock everybody up is obviously not working, so we're, we're looking at other options. And we believe that the enhanced diversion program will be a great start to these type of programs. What we're doing with this is, while still holding people accountable for the actions that led them down this path, we're trying to get to the root of, how did we get here? How did this person find themselves in the criminal justice system? Most of the time, what we're going to find is that it was a lack of access to resources that are available within the community, whether it be for mental health, whether it be for addiction, or some combination of those things. We know that those are some big factors that lead to people getting into these situations. And with the enhanced diversion program, we can provide more structure, and we can provide more oversight. Traditionally, if there was no sort of oversight, or very limited oversight, no supervision at all, the options were grant someone diversion and leave them to their, their own advices, their own devices, or just don't grant them diversion, and they either go to jail or they get on probation. But here, we've got the opportunity to do, to do something else. Generally, the people that we're going to see in this program are people that would previously have been deemed either high-risk, high-needs, or some combination of the two, such that they would not have been able to get diversion. So, what we can do here is, we can accomplish a number of different goals with this program. One thing that we're doing is, the folks in this program are people that are going to be back in the community sooner or later. So, we figure, well, why not see if we can link them up with some resources on the front end, rather than sending them off to jail, sending them off to prison, and then hoping that, well, hey, maybe they'll, maybe they'll get right when they get out. We would like to avoid that, that incarceration altogether. And so, what we're doing is, we're also increasing judicial efficiency. This is, this is about getting intervention and about getting support in place for people, and time is of the essence. We don't want these matters languishing in the court. Anxiety is building. There's no resolution to the, to the case in sight. So, that will make the court system move more smoothly. Ideally, this will reduce the jail population. This will get people out, and it will get people on the road to reformation, and hopefully, they will not reoffend, and we can get them linked up with the services that they need. And it also benefits the community in that it will allow our office to allocate our prosecutorial resources more effectively. We could then allocate those resources to the most serious offenses, to the offenders who are unable to fit into any of our programs, and the people who are, who are causing a serious risk to public harm. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of the people that we would want to have in this program, which would then take us to eligibility. And one thing that I want to specify is that we really do consider these matters on a case-by-case basis. There's no cookie cutter approach. We try to take a very people-centric approach to this, and we understand that people are different, and everyone, and every case involves their own complexities. So, what we will take into account is, on a case-by-case basis, we look at the, the characteristics of the offense. There can be, just if you look at the offense by itself, there can be a pretty broad range of conduct that can lead, that can be housed within one single offense. So, we've got to look at the cases individually. We've got to look at the applicant individually, too. How do they compare to other applicants? What, what might be some mitigating factors in this person's life that led them to this, and how can we help? There are cases that generally would not be appropriate for diversion in the past, but we would be willing to consider them on a case-by-case basis. And those, those offenses would be the offenses that you see on the slide there, the offenses involving that type of conduct. You know, generally, if there's a firearm involved, or if bodily harm results, things of that nature, we generally would not be inclined to grant diversion. However, with an enhanced diversion program, we can look more specifically at those offenses and look at another couple of ways that we can evaluate and assess the situation. Something that we're doing now, that has not been done previously in the office, is we're conducting diversion conferences, where the applicant in their counsel would come in, and they would come in and meet with me. And by statute, anything that's discussed in that meeting would not be admissible if the matter were then to proceed to trial. And we can gather some more information and find out a little bit more about the person and what their needs are, which, if, if for some reason they were not deemed appropriate for the standard diversion, we could send them over for this program, enhanced diversion. They would go down to Criminal Justice Services, and they would be given a risk assessment there. And so, that kind of takes us to operations and to what the, the goals or what the objectives are of the different, the different agencies and departments involved here. So, this office, we would provide oversight. You folks have probably seen a draft of our, our policies that we've, we've got put together. We've now finalized those, and I will circulate the, the final version. We would, if there was the need be, we would conduct violation hearings. And also, we're, we're collecting, and we're going to be providing program data so that we can better assess who's coming into this program and what common characteristics do we see. Criminal Justice Services, I'll turn it over to Shannon Young, and she can talk a little bit about what Criminal Justice Services will be doing in this program.
Hi. I'll do a quick introduction of myself. My name is Shannon Young. I am the adult services supervisor here at Criminal Justice Services with, on the alternatives to incarceration program. So, that is the Behavioral Health Court, the Drug Court, pre-trial services, and house arrest, and the, hopefully, future enhanced diversion program. So, our role in this operation would be, once the district attorney has determined someone to be eligible for the enhanced diversion, we would be notified at that time, and we would then complete what's called the RANT assessment, and that's the risk and needs triage assessment. And that helps us determine someone's risk and clinical needs. It's a quick 15-minute tool that we can do with the client here in the office, or over the phone if need be, or by Zoom. It provides immediate results, and it helps us establish the level of supervision that they need, the duration of diversion that they would possibly need, and the amount of contacts that we would need to have with them during the time that they're on diversion. Then, based upon the results of that RANT assessment, we would be able to also complete a monitoring plan with them, with any recommendations for further clinical assessments, if need be. So, that would be any referrals to obtain like a substance use assessment or mental health assessment.
And so, that takes us over to, and how do we identify people? How do we, how would we go about referring them to this programming? And so, there's a couple of different ways that we do this to avoid people slipping through the cracks. Initially, in, in hopefully launching this program, what we would do is, what Ms. Young and I have talked about is, we would look through the list of people that are presently on pre-trial release, on some form of pre-trial supervision, because we have the people that have been supervised at various levels for a substantial period of time. Given the, how the coronavirus has slowed everything down, there's people that have been on pre-trial supervision for quite some time now. We do have a lot of information on those folks, how they've, how they've been doing, how they've been reporting, and how they've done under supervision. So, we believe that that would be one good place to start. Then, another way that we, we look at this is, when cases are charged in this office, we review the materials available internally, and I can make a determination, you know, is this the case that we should look at? Other attorneys in the office are made aware of these programs, and they will commonly refer things to me if they, they think it would, that the individual may be a good fit for one of these programs, such as enhanced diversion. Then additionally, when an adult services officer goes out to assess someone for a pre-trial release plan, they can also make that, that, that initial assessment and determine, well, hey, this person seems like they might be a good candidate for this program. And then additionally, there's a couple of other ways we can get people in. There's some diversion applications that have been, have been pending for a while, and new ones that have been coming through. Those can be screened for this program. And then, the final way is, there are people that are on diversion, that have had a hard time on diversion, standard unsupervised diversion. They have had difficulty accessing and making, availing themselves of resources. And so, rather than simply moving to revoke diversion on every single one of those individuals, we're going to be looking at those matters and seeing, well, is this someone who, if given the opportunity to enhance, enhance diversion, they might be in a, in a position to successfully complete this programming? So, we've got a number of different kind of stopgaps in place so that we're, we're fairly assessing everyone. And so then, once these cases are, they're assessed in a preliminary matter, that's when they go over to Ms. Young. They receive the risk and needs triage assessment. And then, what will happen at that point is, then Ms. Young's office works to come up with what they believe would be an appropriate reporting, monitoring plan for this person, what types of services that they believe this person may need. And we finalize the plan and the agreement in this office. It's reviewed with the applicant and with counsel, which is provided for the applicant, if they cannot afford counsel. And then, we can get people started in the programming. Time is, time is of the essence, and there's a lot to be done there, but we pack it in as quickly as possible, knowing that we need to get, get these matters moving. And there's a couple of different tracks of people to go. Some people will successfully complete this programming. They will get through it, and it will not be, there will not be any issues. Other people, they may present with some, some issues that were not readily apparent to us at first. For instance, if they have some, they're suffering from mental illness, it may be more pronounced than we initially thought it was. So, they would have the opportunity to be considered for Behavioral Health Court, so they could essentially opt out of the enhanced diversion program, and if they met the criteria for Behavioral Health Court, be accepted into that program. Same with Drug Court. If someone turns out that their addiction was, was more crippling than we had anticipated, then they would have the opportunity, assuming they meet the criteria for that program, they could opt out of the enhanced diversion program and then get into Drug Court. And really, what this is about is, it's about setting people up to be successful. So, we really want to have as many options available as possible. We want revocation, termination of their participation in the program to truly be the last, the last option. It's, it's not, you, you go from violating your conditions to revocation. We really want to see if there are other options before we get to that point. And so, throughout this program, it's, we agree that it's important that people do have legal representation, and that's something that Criminal Justice Services is prepared to provide, as they do in Behavioral Health Court and as they do in Drug Court. That was actually how I got tuned into these problem-solving courses not long ago, when I was on the defense side. Ms. Young had contacted me, and when Drug Court was getting started up and asked if I would be interested in participating as defense counsel, I did for a number of months, and it was, it was an invaluable experience. And so, that's, that's something that will be offered here as well. So, in terms of qualifying and being able to make payment, those are not obstacles for people. One thing I'll note about these, this program and the other programs offered here is, there's no application fee to the potential participant. If they get in, there's no program fee for the participant. There's no monitoring fee. So, it's, we, we don't want to be in a position where people that need these programs are being discriminated against because they can't afford these type of programs, because a lot of times, poverty is a motivating factor in the types of, of issues that lead people into the criminal justice system. And so, we're glad that we have a community that takes these matters so seriously and views this as a community-wide effort to try and, and get people into programming like this, because pretty much any other jurisdiction you go to, you go to Johnson County, you go to Shawnee County, go a little bit further out to Sedgwick County, those district attorney's offices, they charge an application fee. They don't even look at your application unless you pay the fee, whether you're indigent or not. There's a program fee. That fee's not waived in those other jurisdictions. But here, we believe that this community is, is truly committed to empowering us to provide this type of programming to everyone. And that's something that we do not pay for granted. And so, essentially, what we'll be doing is, given that this is a new thing, we know that it needs to be fluid to continue to ebb and flow with the needs of the community and with the needs of the population that we serve. So, we will be reviewing the policies and procedures to make sure that they're in accordance with what needs to be done. The program data, we, Ms. Young and I work with the, the county IT department, and they really were great in developing a wonderful database for us, where we can track all sorts of demographic information and things like that. And down the road, what we're going to have is a way in which we can display, not only from this program, but through the other alternative programs, we can display data on program outcomes on the district attorney's website. It's just something that, it's a longer-term project, but it's something that we're going to be doing. And so, with that, that, that is all that I have. Ms. Young may want to add something, or I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. This was a really interesting and informative presentation. I love the focus on alternatives to incarceration. We know from research on alternatives like drug courts and behavioral health courts that sometimes we see disproportionate representation of white folks in some of these alternatives, and a lot of that is often contributed to discretionary decision-making in the district attorney's office. And I love that this program is really focused on making sure that payment isn't an obstacle. What is in place to ensure that we'll see equitable participation from racial and ethnic minorities in this kind of alternative?
Well, that's, that's a good question. And one of the things that we're doing is, with, with all of our programs, is, we want to make sure that we are, are upholding the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And what we're looking at specifically here is, how can we best serve those communities which have traditionally been marginalized? And so, we've certainly got an eye to that, because those are the people that tend to be most in need of this type of alternative programming. And Commissioner, I am, I am well aware that there is a disproportionate amount of usually white people in these programs as opposed to the other folks, and that's something that I picked up on the criminal defense side. And I, when I got involved in this, I, I've made it a priority that our programs would not mirror what I have seen in the past with that disproportionate representation in these, in these programs. And that's why it's, it was so important to us to get that database set up so that we can track that demographic information. And we don't, sometime down the road, get a surprise and say, oh, well, it turns out we've been administering this program in, in what looks like a very disproportionate manner. We're very mindful of those things from day one.
And do our risk tools take that into account? Since I know that some of the risk assessment tools have been criticized because when we look at where people live, if they have contact with folks with criminal history, oftentimes, because of the disproportionate interactions that people of color have with the criminal justice system, that can be flagged as potential increased risk, when it really has to do with. that can be flagged as potential increased risk when it really has to do with other systemic racist factors.
I I'll chime in on this. I think that, you know, what we have here in place to get started is the fact that we don't have, we're not charging any sort of fee for this is going to be a huge, huge, I think, opportunity for marginal, those who are in marginalized communities. The issue of racial equity and how we go about dealing with those and risk assessment tools, that is really a discussion for another day. It's a discussion that we're having. I mean, that's why we're involved with GARE and the the training that goes and that's involved with that. And the fact that we're going to have a dashboard, I think is going to be helpful for us to see what, who's in our, who's in our programs? And how do we go about being mindful of that? But I think this idea, while I agree with you that these are very important issues, in fact, very important to me personally, and certainly a goal of ours, we need time to look at it. We need time for this. I know the counties coming together with GARE as well as with other racial sort of tool, tools to assist in sort of assessing whether we've got some of this that is benign or malign or something that's sort of underneath what what we're doing. And I think there's going to be a lot of work to be done for that, but I don't think that we have those answers yet. But we are mindful of that. And I think it's a goal that we are going to continue as an office to be very, very, make it as a priority.
So I think that leads into a follow up question. I was curious what, I'm excited to hear that the county's IT staff has been helpful in creating a database to start this out the gate with gathering all that information. So I'm curious what the plan is for looking at and reviewing that information and, you know, make, making adjustments as needed based on that data. Obviously, it takes a little while to have some data to to work with and show patterns. But just curious what the intent around that is to be reviewing it and making adjustments to the program.
I will tell you that the technology in this office is probably, it's very, very old. It's very, we need to update it. We've got different systems that are trying to interface with each other, which makes it very difficult for us to gather data in a way that is going to be, in my opinion, very reliable. So with that in mind, you know, our, our goal is to have a data dashboard. Whereas Mr. Seiden has indicated to you, we have, we interface with law enforcement, we interface with, you know, with the court system so that we can, the public will have real time information about, and with the jail, about who's in our system. Now, for us to achieve that, it's going to require a huge overhaul of our information systems. And quite frankly, on our end in the DA's office, we're going to need that. And if we can't, we cannot be in a space where we can communicate with each other and with other agencies to create that sort of transparency. It's an investment. It's an investment that I think we're going to have to make, both from a county and a city perspective. But I will tell you that I, I, I suspected that the, that the technology in this office was was very antiquated and I am shocked to find out that it is that and more. And I'm a Luddite. I'm one that doesn't, it's not very sophisticated with technology, but our technology is really, really old. And so you, you think about what is possible and there's a lot of possibilities. There's various offices across the country who are really investing in technology and talk, technology that speaks to each other with all kinds of the different agencies in law enforcement. And the only way that those systems work so that we can be held accountable and really see what's going on and provide the information that the public needs for purposes of understanding who's in our system and making changes is for us to invest in technology. So I think once we get to that space, then we're going to be in a better position to share all that information with you. And that's something that we're working on. We have lots of working groups within the DA's office, working groups that work on various pieces of things that need to be done, that in my opinion, need to be done, including technology, which includes launching a working group for information. And that's going to involve various law enforcement agencies and others in the, in our criminal justice system so that we can maybe come up with a proposal that'll work for, for, you know, for us as a community. I hope that answers your question.
Sure. I, I do have some other questions specific to some of what Josh discussed, but I, I wanted to give Commissioner Kelly or Commissioner Portio an opportunity to ask further questions, if you had any.
I will say that when we, when we talked with IT about doing this database, it was really important just to hit the ground with it, starting with it. And we may need to make some changes as we move along. As Josh described it, we want to make it fluid in terms of you could start out a traditional diversion and end up in drug court, essentially, if, if things are such that that's your need. We want to make sure we're tracking that. So the current database that was written for us will track the traditional diversion and the enhanced diversion simultaneously. There'll be two different tracks within the database. Because when we went back to the DA prior to DA Valdez, we didn't really have any real good diversion data to even see if the traditional diversion was even working. We really don't know. And so for us, we're really excited that we're going to be kind of looking at what we're currently having practiced and then this additional enhanced. And we do plan to meet with Josh and the DA staff fairly regularly initially to work out any of the kinks that we, we think we've thought through every problem, but obviously these are going to happen. Yeah, we're excited about tracking data we've never tracked before.
Yeah, that's really smart. And I'm glad to hear that that piece was factored in as part of the groundwork. Commissioner Kelly, did I read that maybe you were gonna say something?
Thanks, Commissioner Reed. At first, I just want to say I appreciate you all hitting the ground running on this. This is exciting and and that you're jumping right into the work and that it's collaborative work. Really excited about that. Just to help me understand something, it said in your policies stipulation to the facts of the case. Can you talk a little bit about what that means a little more?
Certainly. So Commissioner, what we have is, in in most diversion agreements, what you will see is a stipulation of facts. And what the stipulation of facts is, is it's a section of the agreement where it's essentially, it lays out a brief summary of what the state's evidence would be if the matter were to proceed to trial. Because when someone enters into a diversionary program, the way that the these programs are set up, the diversionary programs here is though you're not pleading guilty to any offense and though you're not convicted when you get into the diversion program, if ultimately you were revoked, what you've done to get into the, in the event that that happens, what you've done to get into the diversion program is you've agreed that this, this set of facts that's agreed upon by the parties would be the sole evidence that would be admitted at trial. And it would just be a trial before the court. And essentially, what what happens there is with these diversionary programs, they can take a long time. Then you run into issues with evidentiary issues such as the victims, the survivors, the witnesses. They may no longer be available. It may have been a number of years by the time the thing wraps up and they may not be around to be able to talk about those things. And so it also is a way in, we, we always want to consult with ascertainable victims in these cases. And sometimes victims are not in favor of someone getting into diversion, but they get some closure knowing that they would never have to testify, be called to testify to trial and relive these things. So essentially, it's, it's part of the bargain for exchange. And it, 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 it's sort of even things out for, for everyone. So it, it gives, gives closure to a number of different people.
So if I understood you correctly, that's not the same as pleading guilty, right? It, it's just as, it's, these are the facts of the case. How, what, what's the timeline for gathering that? That seems like it would take a while.
It's, it's a very, it's a, it's a brief summary. And generally, what we get is, it would be similar to what we would get in, a law enforcement would submit to us a probable cause affidavit that would be gathered at the time of arrest. And then they would submit their reports. And so it's just kind of, and we would also reference the, the police report numbers within that, that stipulation of facts. So that the, what would have been the evidence in the case is just, it's sort of incorporated by reference. Because even if someone has agreed to enter into this program, there still has to be some factual basis for a conviction, if that's ultimately the way that it ends.
Thanks for that clarification. I have another question, if that's okay, Commissioner Portio. So have you done any analysis of the cases that you currently have pending? And do you have any sort of prediction? And I know it's early, we of course wouldn't hold you to this, but I'm just interested in how many cases you're looking at that you think would be good candidates for enhanced diversion?
And that's a, that's a good question, Commissioner. So there are, as we are here today, there are over 200 people on pretrial release, on some form of pretrial supervision. Now, it's not to say that all 200 of those people would fit into this program. There may be other ways to resolve those cases. They, they may want to exercise their constitutional rights to trial. But that's going to be the initial pool that we will be looking at. And so some people that are in that pool, we can tell by the offense and the specific characteristics that that's going to be someone that's not going to be appropriate for the program. But I've also got, sitting here in my office and a stack of holders of people that have applied for diversion. And so those candidates will also be considered. So if we were to get up and running within the next week or two, we would probably be looking initially at somewhere in the ballpark of, I think we could, we could have 25 to 50 people into the program, probably within the next month and a half, few months.
So you're saying you think you could, I think you said that 200, that the initial group was in pretrial release. So they're not in our jails right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So how many do you think that would reduce our jail population? I mean, and again, I, I'm just looking for ballpark numbers. I'm just curious where you're thinking here.
And as, as far as that goes, I, I think what we would be looking at is this, this is sort of go in, it would kind of segue into another initiative that we're going to be doing, which is in this office, which is a population review, where we're going to be reviewing the population in the jail. We're going to be seeing what the offenses are and how long the person's been in there and what the bond is at. So ideally, what this would do is this would take people off of pretrial release that are currently being monitored, put them on diversion, then we can start looking at people that would be, maybe, maybe they would be otherwise eligible for pretrial release and then move them from jail to pretrial release or possibly from jail to the enhanced diversion program. So really, it's kind of like one initiative is sort of feeding into the other. And, you know, as far as how many people we could review on the population review each week, I think that that would probably, that would factor into how many people we could get out of the jail. I don't see where it would be difficult to review 10 to 15 people per week and see if we could get decisions made on them. It, so in, in some categories, we may be able to get people out. In other ones, situations, we may not be able to. But it's, it's all part of our kind of a broad based initiative, I guess you could say.
Thank you.
If I, if I could just add that I think it's, it's just another mechanism in place where there's support, you know, the support that, that adult services, for example, will offer that will really keep this population of people out of the jail, get them the structure that they need so that they're, so it keeps those people from being in jail and having them, their, their diversions revoked quicker and then, and then adding to the jail population. So I think that added level of services and support and structure that's in place will give us a lot of bang for our buck and hopefully be the end, if you will, so that we don't populate the jail. And I'm, and Josh may already have said that I'm sorry I had to step out for just a second, but that's really the goal.
And there are kind of different levels of enhanced diversion. We, we kind of modeled after the intermediate, intermediate intervention programs that juveniles do. It's very similar. They're time limited. And so based on their RANT scores, it will help, and then their criminal history, it'll help determine which level diversion we want them to be supervised on, or the district attorney decides to put them on. But that's kind of the plan when we look at what, what the each individual's plan will be based on that. And so we want it to be time limited. We don't want to put low risk people in high risk situations or high risk supervision. So it's very limited and obviously it's self motivated, self motivated in terms of if you're doing really well on enhanced, you could actually move down to traditional diversion if, if, if that were the case. And so as Josh said, it's going to be very fluid in terms of hopefully we want to try and meet their needs without needing any kind of court action if we can avoid it.
Pam, I really love that responsiveness that you're talking about. How do those decisions get made? Will it be the full working group of, from the district attorney's office, a defense attorney, and folks from your office?
Yeah, that'll be a team.
How often are you planning on case conferencing on those?
Well, we kind of initially, and we haven't really talked with Josh, but we were talking about at least every other week and maybe weekly at least like initially starting out, just until we work out some of the kinks. Once we get some of those things worked out, I think we're just going to do some status updates on how, where people are at.
One thing that I'm not sure Josh mentioned, and if he did, I apologize, but we, we've been doing a lot of collaboration with the Defense Bar. Josh has been obviously instrumental in that because of his association with the Defense Bar. But I think, you know, we're going to, certainly they're aware that we're trying to do this program. I think they're excited about it and they will be part of kind of, you know, how we sort of look and review our progress and those kinds of things. I was thinking about the racial piece of this and I just thought I would add, because it just sort of occurred to me, you know, with, with Gare coming in and doing all of sort of the countywide review and help and assistance with coming up with, with policies and ensuring that we're doing the right thing with racial issues and racial equity. The DA's office is going to be the first office to undergo a review to determine, you know, what kinds of, using their tools to figure out what kinds of policies and procedures are in place and can those be finessed and can we do better? And I will tell you, there are no, none of those in place. So all of the recommendations are going to be great. So we will make sure that when they come in to do their review of our office, that they know about the various programs that we have, including these alternative programs where, you know, you're right, we, we got to make sure that we're, it were, it were approving these, that we're reviewing these and, and having a program that is equitable in nature when it comes to marginalized communities and race and all those pieces. So that's something that we'll put on the radar and maybe they can give us some assistance with that. And I think the timing of all of it is actually very fortuitous because we're first on the list for, for Gare to come in and, and, and give us, give us some help. So we're looking forward to that.
I'm really glad that your office is going to have that support. And you also mentioned the interactions with the Defense Bar. And I know Mr. Seidman came from criminal defense most recently. When we think about who is going to be representing folks who are part of this program, I understand if they can afford their own attorney, they'll bring their own. When they can't, are we going to have an acquaintanceless rotating attorneys, a single attorney that we're contracting with? How is that going to work?
Well, and kind of the way that it's worked with, when we were discussing this earlier, it's, we see it working kind of the way that it were initially working, kind of the way that it's worked with, with drug court and with Behavioral Health Court, where Criminal Justice Services have some funding that they're able to utilize for defense counsel in those, those other programs. And so with Behavioral Health Court, there are three attorneys that that's part of their, their duty is they're on a panel where they take the cases, they, they split the cases into, into thirds. Then in drug court, it was, now there's one attorney in there right now. It's, it's a smaller population than Behavioral Health Court. And when I was there, there were two. And through the course of drug court, neither the other attorney nor myself actually had to represent anyone at a sanctions or revocation hearing, which is hopefully that this, this goes the same way. But essentially, what we would be looking at is, we'd be looking at members of the, the But essentially, what we would be looking at is, we'd be looking at members of the, the local bar here that that serve on the current appointment panels, because those are people that we are, are familiar with, and we're familiar with their work, and we're familiar how they interact with with clients. And we know that those are people that would, that would have the right temperament for this type of of representation.
Commissioner Rico, have with your additional questions.
Thank you. So I think a few of them have been touched on. I was curious about what right to counsel looked like and what the process for that would be. Excuse me. I also, I just wanted to clarify, based on the, the draft policy you sent us, and then you touched on it a bit, like if revocation happens, does the case get reset in district court back at the arraignment stage, where you will then file formal charges? Or will it, well, if revocation happens, they go back to court for either a trial setting or sentencing, if there's a plea agreement?
Sure, I can, I can point on that. So if there, and basically what it is, is say that Ms. Young files a violations report with me, and say that that's something, she submits that to me, and that's something that I believe we need to act on. I believe that we need to, I need to file a motion to revoke the person from diversion. So what would happen is I would file that motion in the district court, and then the participant would be given a notice of hearing. We would then put on evidence before a district judge, and the judge would determine whether a violation had occurred. If that did happen, then there'd be several options. A plea agreement would be one option. A trial on the stipulated facts would be another option. But even still, at that point, there'd be the option for Behavioral Health Court. There'd be the option for Drug Court if the other criteria were met. So that's, that's one of the ways it could, it could go. Does that, Commissioner, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to understand if that, what, if the judge decided to grant revocation, or decided after the, the hearing to revoke, if that was an opportunity, were other options that you talked about, kind of the fluidity of opting out of one program and going to another program if it, if it was a more supportive or better fit? So, so that's helpful. I just wasn't clear about that in the draft policy. And then I also noticed that participation and restorative justice was listed as one of the examples of various, and I know that these are all going to be case by case, which I'm, I'm glad for, to really consider the totality of circumstances. But just curious if you could give me a small amount of detail about, like, if there's any restorative justice processes or partners in the community that are kind of lined up that you would offer for certain cases? Or is, would that more look like kind of by design per case process? Because I, I mean, that's new in this community. So I'm just curious how much is flushed out around that choice for enhanced diversion?
Sure, no, no, but thank you, Commissioner. I'm glad that you asked about that. So restorative justice, we actually have a working group that has been meeting since prior to DA Valdez and I were in this office. There's a couple of attorneys in this office that have been working with an agency that that does training for restorative justice. And so it's something that, restorative justice is something that DA Valdez has been involved in throughout her career, and it's something that we're working on getting started now. So ideally, it's something that will be up and running before long. And and with, with the idea that this is going to be something that we hope to be piloting soon, we wanted to include that as a, as a potential term that that could be used in these diversion agreements to help give victims an opportunity to be heard. So that being said, it's not something that is by any means concrete at this, this point. It is, it is very much a, a work in progress. And we, when we talk with the agency again, that we've been speaking with, there's another group that's contacted us that that provides similar types of services. What we would like to do ideally with that program is we would like to have people who are versed in that, in that type of programming, train members of our community to sort of act as the mediator, mediators, or the intermediaries, and help facilitate these, these restorative justice conversations. Because we feel like if it's someone that's a member of the community, that has good community engagement, then it's someone that's going to be familiar with the circumstances that the both sides come from. So that's a, another one of the community-based approaches that we want to take.
Thank you, I appreciate the extra detail on that. And looking forward to, to seeing that. I think I would be remiss if I didn't wear my victim advocate hat a little bit and just inquire for a little bit more elaboration on what victim involvement will look like in the, especially in the beginning. And I appreciate that you spoke to Commissioner Kelly's question about stipulation of facts and kind of a, an opportunity in that to provide victims with some, some closure and not necessarily be called subpoenaed to testify in the future, if it were to go back to a criminal prosecution. But can you help me understand how, what the efforts will look like for your office to involve victims in the process, obviously as much as they want to be? But in terms of really having a voice, will they have a voice to say what they, what conditions or particular programs they would like to be considered between the DA's office and adult services?
So I, yeah, no, and I can, I think I can jump in on that a little bit, because, you know, the, the victim-centered approach to prosecution is something that is very important to our office. And that's in everything that we do, whether it's the prosecution of violent crime, whether it's the alternative programs and getting the victim's perspective about, you know, sort of disposition of a case or how a case should be, you know, handled. I, I will tell you, I, I've been here for two and a half weeks, and I am impressed with the victim advocates that we have in this office, how they go above and beyond, and to ensure that the survivor or victim in any case is informed and is treated in a way that is respectful. And I, I am really proud of, of, of what we're doing in that space. So to your question about, you know, how do we, I think the creation of our SVU, which relates to special, you know, to special victims and prosecution of those cases and how we handle it, will be very, of course, very trauma-informed, not only from the prosecutorial perspective, but certainly from the support that will go to those cases for those victims slash survivors. So if your question relates, Commissioner, to just how we're going to handle and address victims and treat victims in our office as a general matter, I think I've given you, I hope I've given you a very good description of how important it is to us and how victim-focused we are. Now, keep in mind, we're in the criminal justice system. So when we try to work with victims or survivors, sometimes we have to be, we have to inform them of what the law requires us to do. Of course, that may not be helpful, and certainly may, the victim or survivor may not be happy with what we have to tell them. But, you know, we're going to try to do it in a way that's very compassionate and want, in a way that is very, I hope, victim-centered, knowing that we still have this prosecution of a case that we have to follow through, there are certain parameters, certain things that we can or cannot do. Hopefully, try to communicate what those expectations are, what we can or cannot do in a way that is more compassionate. So I, I hope that that, that meets with your approval. Certainly, the, the, the community partners that we have in this, in Lawrence and Douglas County are fantastic. We need to do better at having those community relationships, which I think we're, we're doing. And we want to hear from, from anybody and anybody who has a, you know, who wants to to talk about it and make sure that we're doing the right thing. Josh, did you want to add on to that with this particular piece of like, you know, the diversions or the alternatives to, to, to what we, what we're doing in the office?
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. So Commissioner, in, in the, I'm going to address this in the context of domestic violence cases, because that's where we specifically made some changes to the standard diversion policy. One thing that we're doing now that we haven't, that has not previously been done in this office is if it's, if it's a domestic violence case, and that's any allegation of domestic violence, not just domestic battery, it could be criminal damage to property, but it, it would fall under a domestic violence offense. What we're doing in those matters is we're, we're, once we've looked at the case, we've considered the case, we've considered the application for diversion. Most likely, we're going to request that the, before the applicant can be determined for eligibility, they'll need to get a domestic violence assessment in advance. It's not, previously, it was required after someone had gotten into the program, but we would like to have some more information upfront. And it's, it's going to be a rare exception that someone charged with a domestic violence offense does not have to meet with me for a diversion conference. I want to see that assessment, I want to have a diversion conference, because if I look at that assessment and I feel like the applicant has minimized the conduct that occurred, or has intentionally misstated what I believe to be the facts based upon the other information available to me, I don't believe that that person's going to be a good candidate for the program. So that's something that we take very seriously. In fact, there was an individual I spoke with last week whose partner had applied for diversion, want to be considered for some of these programs. I was probably on the phone for about a half an hour with the survivor in that case. And based upon that conversation, I, I determined that this person would not be appropriate. That's not going to happen every single time, but it was a very good reminder for me that we do need to approach these from a very victim-centric angle. And we, DA Valdez and I have received some trauma-informed training. We are intending to get more for the attorneys in these, in this office. The one thing that I would note is that the return, the attorneys that remained in this office and the new attorneys that we've brought in, they really are very victim-centered. They do take a very strong advocacy approach, and that's the culture that we're going to continue with as we move forward.
Both, I appreciate everybody's time, and I know we're a few minutes past five, and I appreciate Commissioners for indulging me in having a few extra questions. Thank you.
I have one more, if we have just, if we can just stick around for just a little bit longer. I appreciate Commissioner Portillo's questions about race and equity, because I, I do think there's a decision-making point when we have those case-by-case basis. When I see that on there, that, I know all of our intentions are to be non-racist, but we have inherent bias that is there. And, and the only way that we, in my mind, can really address those is to continue to collect data on it and see. And I think we've made huge strides on the data we share on the CJCC hub regarding race and gender, and who's in our jail, who's in pretrial release. But we don't do it for diversion. Is that something that you're thinking, when you think about that 25 to 50 people you think are in the, do you see providing racial data on that just as a way to reflect on the decisions that are being made?
Absolutely, Commissioner. That's why we wanted to get that, get that database in place before we started. And, and everyone that applies for diversion from when we came into office moving forward is going to be logged into that database. And it's, it's in the interest of, we, we want to be equitable. We want to make sure that we're being inclusive, and we want to be transparent, because we are accountable to the community. And so once we are able to, as we're collecting that data, then with the, the data dashboard that's, that's similar to the, the hub that you were just talking about that CJCC uses, we want to be able to make this available and readily accessible and current for the public.
And the database is not only going to track those that are on the diversion program, but those who are referred. So even if they're denied, it's still going to be in there, so we'll know the, the demographics of those who are denied and those who were on the program.
My mind, Pam, thank you, that's exactly what I was thinking, yeah.
Well, thank you all. Do we have any final questions, comments, or important thoughts?
I would just say, thanks for that offer. I, I appreciate this, not having all the answers right away and letting some of this as the system works its way out. That, that's hard, and the public doesn't always allow for that. You know, there, there's this idea that we've got all the answers, and we'll just figure it out, you know, if we just put all the answers in place. So I look forward to hearing you come back at a, at a later date and giving us some updates. I'm, I'm thinking we haven't done our budget for 2022, and I already, sounds like we need a new computer system over there. So, you know, I, I hope that you'll come back and, and share some of your learnings as you work through the program.
One of the things that I will offer to you, Commissioner, and to, you know, any, anybody and everybody, I mean, I, one of the things that I, that was very important to me when I ran for office is just the collaboration of all of us who are trying really to achieve the same goals. You know, and, and to put it simply, it is, you know, making sure that people are with their, with their families and in the community and working, and we, you know, holding them accountable when we need to, and only prosecuting those crimes that are seriously violent, that we really got to do to keep our community safe. So I think that's really what we're trying to do, we're trying to do it fair, we're trying to do, do it equitably. We're trying to really achieve those goals. And so we've created a lot of working groups. And, you know, I tell people, I wish I, you know, I don't have a magic wand so that we can make all these changes, but there's lots of ideas, people have lots of ideas. Please let us know, we'd love to come back. I know that, for us, I think a big piece of, you know, it's the Gare sort of influence that we're going to have in our office, and what they're going to sort of tell us with, with what they think we need to do, and give us some suggestions and recommendations, and really spend some time with us. So we're always happy to come and chat with you, to give you updates. If you want updates, we're happy to talk about, you know, whatever it is you think that you'd like us to chat about. And I do agree with you that the CJCC is a wonderful body, where a lot of those ideas were, you know, I've, I've been in all those meetings since April, watching from, from the, you know, from the gallery, so to speak. So I, I've seen the work that's done, and I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful group and, and a great, a great opportunity for us to have those ideas come through. But we're happy to hear from you all too, and be, if you want us to come back, just let us know.
If I could add one thing, I just, I, I don't think that we could possibly, DA Valdez or myself could possibly express how appreciative we are of Criminal Justice Services for working with us on this project. I mean, we're, we're two and a half weeks in, and we're talking about a program that's ready to launch now. We, we could easily be two and a half months in or two and a half years in and not have something like this ready. But Criminal Justice Services has, has just done an amazing job of helping us get up to speed and, and doing the things that we need to help us along. So we, we really appreciate that.
It's a collaboration, we all are trying to do the same things and increase, improve our continuum of services for, for our citizens. So we're excited to hit the ground running on this. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all, we really appreciate the opportunity to hear from you and ask all the questions. And I'm sure that we will have more, and we'll invite you back. Sarah, tell me what we need to do from here.
So we just, we just recessed until our 5:30 business meeting.
Sounds good.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.